Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. The board is meeting today in work session. This is an opportunity for the board to come together to meet, to discuss, and receive information. At this time, we have two agenda items. The first is a strategic plan update, and the second, we will be discussing our legislative program for the 2025 Maryland Legislative Session. So with that, I'll turn things over to Dr. Savine to introduce staff.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the board. First, I want to extend my appreciation to this board for your level of engagement through the strategic planning process, and ultimately, for your approval of our current strategic plan, your journey, our commitment in July. Our team has been very busy since approval in July. We focused on the launch, and now also, we're transitioning into the implementation. Our commitment to this board and the public is to update each of you and our public on our progress along the way on a quarterly basis. So we're doing so today in a work session format. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Webster, who will provide some highlights regarding our launch.
Thank you. Good evening or good afternoon, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Savine. This afternoon, as Dr. Savine just mentioned, we will highlight our launch of the strategic plan, your journey, our commitment. The board adopted the strategic plan in July, and we would like to share with you how we've approached the launch at both the district and the school levels. We will start with our district launch. An important start has been ensuring that we made our key stakeholders aware of the content of the plan and allowing them to connect their work to this bigger vision and the goals of the plan. First, Dr. Savine shared an overview of the strategic plan priorities and goals at our August leadership meeting with all administrators. We also included an overview of the plan's priorities and goals during our new teacher induction in August. And as staff came back to start this school year, we had a video overview from Dr. Savine for all staff to hear about our district strategic plan and the priorities and goals that will drive our work for years to come. Dr. Savine also had the opportunity to share a similar overview of the plan with the business community during their September Greater Hagerstown Committee meeting. In previous presentations to the board, I've shared the strategic plan priorities, goals, and objectives. We've updated our strategic plan page to create a dashboard on our website to now include the strategies that the design team identified in order to address each of the objectives within our plan. We will keep this page updated as our work evolves, and we learn from the initial steps that we're taking to address each goal area. In the future, we'll also be layering on additional information to the dashboard, including progress monitoring on the data points and key actions we take under each goal area. I would like to highlight some of the key district-level actions that we've taken under priorities one and three as we've launched the plan. This list is not exhaustive, but it does give you some insights into how we're initiating targeted actions aligned to the specific objectives under these two strategic plan priorities. First, in priority one, student success. We've started by taking time with our school-based administrators to reflect on how the core values in our strategic plan look in our leadership. We felt this was important because we know that our leadership actions need to be in alignment with the core values that our design team identified in the development of the plan if we're going to be able to realize the vision and mission. We also focused in each of our monthly council meetings thus far with principals and lead teachers on professional learning and collaboration around student achievement. This year, we've created monthly professional learning with our assistant principals, which I just came from, around the same instructional leadership topics from our principal and lead teacher meetings to ensure that we're building a common language and capacity around the delivery of and response to student learning results. We're very excited about our work alongside principals to align our school improvement processes and templates to the strategic plan priorities and goals. A central office plan is only as good as it translates into the practice in schools. So we're taking the time to share our thinking around how our strategic plan at the district level looks in school improvement work with principals and develop meaningful goals alongside them that are aligned with our strategic plan priorities. We've also worked with high schools to update or create MTSS plans for 11th and 12th graders who are not yet designated as college and career-ready to ensure that we have targeted efforts to get them there. We've also held math learning labs with our administrators at the secondary level and math and ELA learning labs at the elementary level to be able to observe first and supplemental instruction using our HQIM resources in action and reflect on how we apply what we see with our own school teams. Our elementary quarterly visits are underway. These are powerful opportunities for our central office team members from curriculum, special ed, ML, and school supervision to come together with school-based teams to review student academic progress and determine how we can best support their continued improvement at the school. We've launched HQIM resources for middle and high school ELA classrooms, and we're very excited to have been able to bring a new engaging extracurricular activity to our students in the flag football program. Shifting to priority three, we've launched our Gold Compass Award. This district-level recognition goes to staff members who exemplify the core values of our strategic plan. We sent a nomination form to staff in September to recognize a colleague for their work that's in alignment with one or more of the core values, and we selected six of these staff members last week to recognize as our first-quarter winners, thanking them for leading the way. We will engage in this process again and select second-quarter winners in January. As you know, our employee health center is also open for business, providing a streamlined way for staff to access primary care. We've revised our exit survey that we use when employees leave the district so that we can learn more about why and be able to use that information to improve our work. We have a retention work group that is launched, consisting of employees across our offices and teams to support the innovations from our HR team to help us identify and make improvements targeted specifically at retaining our talented staff. We've also launched a voluntary third-year teacher induction mentor program designed to continue the support of our Year One and Year Two program into the third year to provide customized support to our new teachers. We continue to develop and share district resources for schools to use to engage their staff in learning about best practices to support student behavioral needs. We've launched two district initiatives to give consistency in language and practice on two important topics: cell phones and attendance. We continue to support schools with the use of proven strategies from our schools that support increased attendance. I just came from a presentation with APs on that one, too. We're in the process of developing our district engagement survey for families, staff, and students that will give us perceptual feedback on school climate and community engagement work. And we've launched our CareSolace Health Navigator that provides district support -- or, I'm sorry, provides direct support to any student, staff, or family member needing assistance locating mental health services. That's a highlight of some of the actions we've taken at the district level, and now I'd like to shift to the voices of our school-based staff to share how they launched the strategic plan in their schools this fall.
WCPS recently adopted its five-year strategic plan, Your Journey, Our Commitment. We asked administrators and teachers for their first impressions launching the plan.
When we came back to school, the teacher's first day, we spent some time in the morning. We shared the pamphlet, so we had the materials that we shared. And I've got a really good sense of refocus and excitement when we were looking at the core values and we spent that time having those conversations. It was something, really, that people felt that, one, when they're making their own personal connections, two, it kind of resets their why, why we do what we do. But then when we come together as a collective group and share those personal connections together, it helps us reframe what our focus is and what our why is as a school community.
I wanted my staff to see the important work that had been done at the county level, so I kicked it off at our Back-to-School Week with our staff and really highlighted some of the key elements of the plan. I also wanted to let them know that, you know, a lot of work that we're already doing aligns with this, so I lifted out various pieces of work that we're doing here at Smithburg Elementary and how it would align with parts of the strategic plan.
I think it's always comforting to know if you're on the right track or not, so this is really helping us to do that. Again, our staff appreciates equity. What are the other schools doing? What's happening? And so we can bring this to them and say, you know, these are the values that we have as a county, and you're fitting into those really nicely.
When we sat down at our sit meeting and we were presented with the core values of, you know, WCPS, we, you know, went through those and read what the WCPS stated at each one, and then we kind of thought to ourselves, how do I see myself doing those? And then we kind of wanted to make up our own here at Hager, so how can we align them? How can we align our values at Hager to match up directly with WCPS?
Well, one of the areas that we've been working on is the priority three with climate and culture and really building the positive things that are happening here at Smithburg Elementary. We really want to highlight ways that staff and students are doing positive things in our building. So for our students this year, we really focused on the positive through creating what we're calling a positive postcard. It also covers a little bit of priority four in the family engagement piece because our positive postcards are also sent home. So a student establishes one of the three norms that we have here at school: be safe, be respectful, or be ready to learn, and then a staff member, any staff member, can recognize them. The student then gets a positive postcard, they're read off on the morning announcements for the entire school to hear, they get a prize, and then the postcard itself goes home to parents. So we're communicating with parents positive things that are happening with the students during the school day.
Staff morale's a really big deal. We know if teachers are not feeling their own well-being, if they're not well, they're not going to teach well. So we had to get creative, and how could we reward staff, just like we reward our kids? So we started to charge our teachers with, here's a pack of leopard loot that we want you to pass out to all of your colleagues when you see them doing amazing things. The jar gets full. At the end of the month, we pick two prizes off of this ring. This ring is donated prizes. So staff have created, they've all donated a prize to our ring. The first year we did it, we maybe had 10 staff participating, and now they're all bought in. So it's really, it's good. I truly feel like we're living it each day, and I see that in our building, but I also see that when I go to my lead teacher meetings. It has really brought to light the purpose of strategic planning, how important it can be, and the value of it the whole way down to student and family level.
There's no doubt that the past few years has been different in education. For me, the strategic plan and then looking at our next steps as a school staff has made me excited because it allows us to step back. It allows us to step back and think about where we currently are, what's our current reality as public educators in public schools, and what do we do to move forward?
And that concludes my update, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Savine.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Just as a reminder to the board, certainly, we welcome your engagement and feedback. This is designed to be a high-level overview. As Dr. Webster referenced, we do have a dashboard that will provide more detailed narratives as a courtesy to this board. You will be receiving this this week, likely tomorrow, so you'll have a special email from me. And then here later this week, there will be a public update on our website and dashboard. Our commitment is to do that on a quarterly basis throughout the year.
I have a question. Can you talk more about the girls' flag football? Because that's the first -- I knew that it was, I knew that a game had been organized, but I didn't know it was tied directly in with the strategic plan, so how did that come about?
The flag football is a good example of where we had an opportunity to form a partnership with the Baltimore Ravens to bring flag football to WCPS, and we want, what we want to do is make those intentional connections that, one of the pieces of feedback that we got from our students and from our parents and our staff is that we really need to be intentional about finding new and different ways to engage students in extracurricular activities, make sure they feel connected to their school. It's, we keep going back to the COVID time where we lost parent engagement, we lost student engagement, and even staff engagement for the challenges that their work has presented. And so the flag football is a really great example of the types of different ways of thinking, of using student voice and using opportunities for partnerships to continue to grow our options for students to engage with the school.
Have we considered it all middle-school sports?
So in this initial phase, we're, the first step is actually one of our surveys, a couple of things. Our survey that we're about ready to launch for students, staff, and families, one of the questions we ask is, are you involved in your school? Like, do you already participate in an extracurricular activity? So that we can get a gauge from students of what their perception is of how engaged they are, and do they find, like, do they find that they have a place in their school? And then we also have a space for them to share with us what they're interested in engaging in so that we can use their feedback to see how to expand. What types of programs do our schools need to be thinking about in order to reach young people today? They have different interests than when we were in school. So we'll use that feedback, and principals are designing their school improvement plan. When I mention that connection between the district strategic plan and their school improvement plan, they're looking specifically at that question of engagement, and what extracurriculars do we have, and what do we need to do to expand? So we're in the initial stages of that, but definitely, there's a lot of opportunity to engage middle schoolers, to your point.
Thank you, Dr. Webster.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
We have with us our chief legal counsel, Mrs. Ram, and our deputy communication officer, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Ram, do you have something that you wanted to open with?
I certainly can. President Williams, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Savine. What the LRT brought forth in front of you this afternoon is largely unchanged from last year. Our priorities have remained the same with a few exceptions, and we'll go into that. You know, we have a big focus on blueprint and funding and making certain that any mandates that are brought forward are fully funded, so the burden is not left on the local district. But also, as you look through this document, we've really aligned it with the strategic plan since our budget, as you'll recall from last year, we aligned everything with the budget priorities, and since our budget priorities and strategic plan are aligned, the legislative, proposed legislative program is also aligned with that strategic plan.
Okay, just as a review, as you may recall from last year, the advocacy duties, once again this year, will be handled in-house. Mrs. Ram, Ms. Brown, myself, Dr. Savine, and the members of the LRT or Legislative Response Team will work together throughout the session to advocate for the positions of the board. Where we would like to get today is to get you all prepared to take action at your next meeting on the 19th, to adopt your legislative program for the 2025 Legislative Session. And that meeting, as you know, is on November the 19th. And then the following morning, we're scheduled to present that legislative program to the Washington County delegation, the time tentatively for that is 10:45 on November the 20th. As we did last year, we will be monitoring throughout the session. We benefit from the relationships that the school division has with MAB as well as PISAM. Mrs. Ram's relationship with Green Street is helpful as well. Throughout the session, as I said, we'll be monitoring, as we did last year. We'll be submitting written testimony as appropriate, making trips to Annapolis to advocate and to provide oral testimony, again, as appropriate, and certainly, we'll keep the LRT and the full board informed with the updates throughout the session. Want to walk you through the core values, the legislative priorities, and then the legislative watch list as it appears in the proposed legislative program. The core values are basically unchanged from last year. You can see them there on the screen. I do just want to highlight again what Mrs. Ram mentioned. They do align with your strategic plan. In fact, if you note on page two of the proposed legislative program, there's a statement there, and I'm going to read that because I think that's important for the community as well as each of the board members to know. It says, "The board will support legislation that helps each student succeed, provides access and opportunities for each student, promotes safety and wellness for the entire learning environment, and promotes community engagement." And if those sound familiar, that's because they're the priorities of your strategic plan.
Steve, where are you reading from?
On page two of the actual draft program.
The 2025 Legislative Program. It would be in front of those slides. The first core value is the adequate and equitable local and state funding. This is carried over, but of those, under that core value, we're really focused on equity and funding. That has remained unchanged from last year in ensuring that we receive what we need to serve our students, whether it's our farm students, our multilingual students, special education, rising transportation costs, the age of our schools, the wealth of the county. Also, publicly-funded full-day pre-kindergarten and the pre-K expansion. I know there's been talk, we've heard rumblings, about changing how that funding works, and as the board is well aware, we expanded pre-K before it was required. We saw a lot of success. We're ranked really high in the state, so we just want to ensure, moving forward, we can continue with that success of our pre-K programs and that all the students in Washington County have access to it, which we would need the funding to be able to do so. Also, maintenance of effort, although the slight change from last year is we're likely in the blueprint buckets, as Mr. Prue calls them, and not the escalator clause. So we'll be monitoring that to make certain that between state and local funding, there aren't any bills being introduced that would reduce the amount of money we're receiving. The fourth item up there is adequate and equitable state funding to improve school buildings and create capacity. As you know, we have aging buildings. You've seen our facilities master plan. We are building a new school, and we want to make certain that we receive the appropriate amount of money from state and local and that there's no reduction in cost there. New for this year is equitable National Board-certified teacher salary enhancement and funding. So I'm going to pause and spend a few minutes on that. Under blueprint, as you'll recall, there are enticing teachers that get National Board certification, and if you become nationally board certified after July 1, 2022, there's a $10,000 salary enhancement. And the state, it's a mandate, and the state is funding that mandate. However, for staff that are already nationally board certified, the funding formula does not include those staff, so that money would come out of our pockets if we were to offer them that salary enhancement. But we want that, we want it equitable. If you've already obtained it, there shouldn't be any reason for you not to receive that same salary enhancement as someone who doesn't have it, and the same goes for the recertifications. We do have staff that are already recertified, and although that mandate is there, there's not funding for those that obtained it before it became a requirement. So there is a concern there, and we're advocating to ensure there's equitable funding. If there's a mandate for National Board, those that have received it prior to blueprint should receive similar funding. And also, part of that comes from the opportunity schools, that additional $7,000 that you would receive, and those opportunity schools for staff who teach at an opportunity school and are nationally board certified. That is a new area. Are there any questions on that before we move on?
But we are paying all National Board-certified teachers right now.
That's subject to negotiation, so we're not. Currently, under the career ladder, we've negotiated last year, as you'll recall, for those that obtained it after 2022, 2022 and after. So that, because the state reimburses us for that. So we have not, that's on the table for discussion during the upcoming negotiations.
And I would assume this is, we may get support from other counties on this because I imagine this is a problem they're facing as well?
I can't speak on behalf of other counties. I've had conversations with some of my counterparts in other school systems. There are currently other school systems that are already doing it. They have deeper pockets than we do, so it's also a recruitment and retention issue. If I'm a staff member that potentially could make, at minimum, $10,000 more just across the county line because their county has funded it, that's an issue for us as well. But it's, I, it almost, in my opinion, is an unintended consequence of blueprint where they didn't think about, there are staff that are already nationally board certified.
And the opportunity school extra seven is tied to National Board.
Correct.
But those teachers who achieved it before 2022 are not getting anything extra.
I don't want to misspeak, so I will double-check that and get an answer for you.
If you don't mind, could you check to find out what that number is that we would be looking at, that we'd have to make the difference of if we do have that to make equal?
Yes, I can. It's, I can. I think we looked it up, and it's about 22 staff. Dr. Savine, you met with the --
Yeah, let me add to the conversation, and I'll ask Mr. Prue to come forward with the specific figures. But to this topic, and thank you for extending the floor, this was brought to our attention, and Dr. Webster and Mrs. Baker and I met at the WCTA office with a segment of some of our teachers that fell into this category. And I'll just say, as superintendent, I support making sure we have those teachers that were visionary, kind of ahead of the curve, that solve value in going through the National Board certification process before there was any types of discussion regarding payment. I think they too, in my opinion, need to be appropriately compensated. I believe Mr. Prue has probably shared some figures. I know there are at least five teachers that are in that category, perhaps as many as 22. Is that --
So that would be the recert category of the five teachers. We are paying all nationally board certified teachers the $10,000. What we are not currently is those that were recertified before the blueprint law went into effect, so that there's provisions of additional money for those that recertify, and it's a minimum of five teachers who are currently already recertified, they've been nationally board certified for so long prior to this, and that's the discussion So I don't have an exact dollar amount, but we can get that for you, Mr. Gessford.
And the proposal from a legislative standpoint, this is a state issue, and I believe it's appropriate for us to advocate for the state to fund this while, you know, we're referencing Washington County. The likelihood of this impacting -- we're referencing Washington County, the likelihood of this impacting most, if not all districts, is pretty significant. As Mrs. Ram has already mentioned, there are some counties that have stronger funding stream. They've already made that adjustment. As a secondary, if for some reason it doesn't occur in the legislative process, as was referenced, this will be a part of the negotiated agreement process this year.
So the next core value of local control, there are, the first topic is governance authority for local boards of education to set educational policy and school budgets. And it's largely unchanged from last year. But what is highlighted in yellow as an addition is to add not only standards for academic and fiscal, but also curriculum. So local control over setting the curriculum, and local control over setting school calendars, tailored to meet the needs of each individual county, so that we would retain more authority over those matters, rather than being set largely at the state.
Don't we already have a program of studies, so that we do not, we are not accountable for the state curriculum?
Well, our program of studies encompasses what we are required to provide, that the state mandates under our curriculum. So, I mean, there are aspects of that that we have to cover.
I'm just trying to figure out what is being fixed by adding the yellow.
So each year, there are bills introduced, every year, I would say at a minimum, like two dozen bills are introduced, putting additional curriculum requirements on the local school systems. And MAB opposes those every year. We oppose those every year. I mean, some of them are a great idea in theory, but really, the local schools should have the ability to determine what the curriculum is. So while we oppose it every year, we've never actually had it in our legislative program. So it's, it's just following along what we have been doing. But like I said, every year, there's, I mean, last year, it was financial literacy was introduced. There's always, every year, other bills addressing specific curriculum. And so while we oppose it, we've never actually stated that in our legislative program.
So this would just be codifying it, so that, moving forward, it would be part of our core values, and we would know that this would be a bill that we would be opposed to?
Correct. Additionally, when we talk about the fiscal authority, is there was a bill introduced last year, where the county would have more control over how schools spend their money. And so we would oppose that. Schools should have the ability, once they receive their funds, to determine how they're spending the money, without increased oversight of state and county government.
And I, I would just like to add that MAB, in its legislative endeavors, has been very stalwart in opposing any new curriculum passed by the General Assembly. If you follow the things that I send out to all members, all those bills, we're always opposed to those things.
And then also unchanged from last year is our position on charter schools, that we should retain control and authority, as the law currently provides for, to grant charters and administer the funding to charter schools.
Okay, the third and final core value has to do with unfunded mandates. And quite simply, it's been the board's position to oppose new unfunded mandates. And should there be any new legislative mandates that might be handed down by the state, that the funding accompanies those? Any further discussions on the core values? Any questions with regard to these three, before we move on? Got a thumbs up. It looks like we're good. Okay, we'll now move on to the legislative priorities and review those for you.
There are three legislative priorities this year. Funding formulas, and state funding for safe and secure learning environments, and filling vacancies. I'll cover the first two, which is adjusting the funding formulas to support desired educational outcomes. This is unchanged from last year. The language is the same. It's just to ensure that with all the requirements of blueprint, that we are receiving the adequate funding necessary to carry out our school district operations and serve our learners. The next topic is state funding for school resource officers to support safe and secure learning environments. As you will recall, last year, there was a bill introduced that passed that expanded the use of grant money, money to fund our school security assistance. We also supported language change, we WCPS Board of Education, to include also the funding for SROs. That didn't go anywhere. So you can use that grant money to fund your school security assistance, but we're still seeking the expansion of that grant to allow funding for SROs. We're one of the few school systems that pays for their own SROs. And given we know they're an integral part of school safety, we're looking to see if we can get some expansion on that grant to supplement that funding.
The next priority is new this year. It has to do with filling vacancies on this board. Give you a little bit of the background with regard to this, and then lay out the priority as it's stated, and the options that are being laid out for the board to discuss. Prior to 2008, in the event of a vacancy on the Board of Education here, the governor appointed a qualified individual to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term, or until a successor was elected and qualified. Then in 2008, the law was changed, and the Washington, Washington County School Board Nominating Commission was created. And that commission is tasked, within the event of a vacancy on this board, that commission would submit the names of no more than three nominees to the Board of County Commissioners, and then the Board of County Commissioners would select the individual to fill the vacancy. And that's as it currently stands, the process. Their recommendation is to, to change that, and there are two options that are being brought forward to you for your consideration. One would be that the remaining members of the Board of Education fill the vacancy, until the term ends and someone is elected and qualified to fill it. Option two would be similar to the current process, with one difference. The Washington County School Board Nominating Commission would still submit the names of no more than three nominees to fill that vacancy. But instead of submitting that to the Board of County Commissioners, that submission would come to the remaining members of this board, who would then fill the vacancy.
So this seems like an egotistical sleight of hand to me. We've had two people appointed that are well-chosen. And I think it's a slap in the face to a funding body, body, to say, "You can't choose anymore." I, I am so absolutely opposed to fixing something that's not broken. Safety, yes. Funding, yes. Why is this a legislative priority?
Can I speak, can I speak to that? I agree with this, either one. I don't think, I think that we are all capable of choosing a replacement. And I don't see why the county commissioners, who don't really deal with education like we do, should have the choice to choose the next person to sit on the board. So I, I agree with this. Either the remaining BOE members fill the vacancy, or they go through the nominating committee, and then they present those names to us. And then we decide. I agree with it.
The question was asked, why?
It, it came up through the Legislative Response Team, and...
Who?
The members of the Legislative Response Team. That would be the president, the vice president, Mr. Bigford.
So why was it brought up?
The superintendent, and Mrs. Ram. It was brought up as a way to have local control, to have the board in control of making the decision as to who sits on the board, as opposed to the funding partner. What the county commissioners, and, and I see what's happening currently as a fix to what was seen in, prior to 2008, as being something that was political, and having the governor fill those vacancies. It, to me, it makes no sense to have an elected body, who is elected by the voters of Washington County, to govern the school system, not to have the authority to decide how to replace a board member who exits and creates a vacancy. Why it would fall to another governing body, who has no authority over the Board of Education. And I think it creates an issue of a misunderstanding by those individuals who sit on that funding partner body, that they believe that they do have authority over the board of education.
So you're saying that the choice of Linda and Darryl were bad decisions by the county commissioners?
No, I, no one said that. No one said that. And no one is saying that, had it been another, this way, that the decision would have been any different. What it's saying is, who should have the authority to make that decision? And in my mind, it should be the Board of Education that fills the vacancy, not its funding partner, who has no authority over the Board of Education. The voters of Washington County
Exactly.
have decided, this is the job of the county commission, this is the job of the Board of Education. And the people in the Board of Education should make the decision as to who fills that vacancy. And all of this would come through, again, through the commission that nominates, if that's one of the selections. If it's the first one, there would be a process involved. So if, if you can tell me why you think that it's, it's the county commissioners' responsibility to fill a vacancy on the Board of Education, I'm, I'm happy to, to listen and entertain that idea.
The same committee that submits the three people to the county commissioners would do it to the Board of Education.
Correct.
But then the county commissioners get to pick the person. And look how well they've done. Okay, that's fine. But we, that doesn't mean that the...
It is not broken!
No, I don't want to argue about it. I'm just saying, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the authority to, to choose. There, sometimes change is fine. I think this change is a good change.
No. Can you explain to me why you think that it should be the way it is? You say it's not broken. I don't know what the discussion was in 2008, when it was left to the commissioners. I don't know if there was ever a discussion that it should be left to the Board of Education. But how, how can you help me understand why you think the Board of County Commissioners should be deciding who sits on the school board?
Had you been listening to my comments, you would have heard that answer. I've already stated it.
Now, please, please repeat it.
I'm not doing it for you, Melissa. You want to argue, I'm not arguing.
April, you've said that this doesn't, it doesn't make sense to fix something that's not broken.
I think that there, that, you don't want me to say what I think.
Yes, I do. I absolutely do.
I think there are people on the board right now who will not finish their term, and that it is being given to the remaining people to do that. And I don't think that's a good idea. Three other counties do it? Yes. We are not those three other counties. We need to use elected officials, after the committee submits the names, to judge and make the same quality decisions they've shown in the past. I don't know two better people that could be on the board. I'm sorry. I'm for them both, and I think they've done a great job. It's not broken. Let's not mess in it. As a legislative priority?
It has to be done by the legislature, yes. That's the thing.
There are a lot of things we need beyond this.
I wasn't here when, in 2008. I don't know the thinking of the people that did that. But I have sat on one of those commissions, and there was a variety of folks in the community that asked some great questions to the candidates. And all the candidates weren't all qualified. And it was, I would say, a very hard decision, and to make those. But I think each one of the people that sat on that commission to give the commissioners the names that they recommended, did their due diligence, and, and tried to find the best candidate. And I think, to April's point, it's worked. There should be no reason why it needs to be changed, unless there's an, an alternative motive. And I don't think at this time, with right in an election season, that we should be bringing this up. After, was it, since 2008, and now you want to change it? I just don't feel this is the right time. I don't think you, you need to do it. It hasn't, it hasn't swayed in any other way. I think we do have great board members, two of them that were selected by those committees and by the county commissioners. And I wouldn't change it. I mean, I don't agree with everything they say, but I wouldn't change it. So I'm, I'm happy. And I'm not going to argue with you, Melissa, so don't give me this, "Well, tell me why." I'm just not going to argue with it. This is the way I feel. And I'm entitled to that. So thank you for leaving it alone at that.
First of all, there's a difference between arguing
No.
and having a discussion.
No.
She's right.
There's a dis-
She's not arguing with you.
No, you just continue wanting to banter on this. We can say our opinion, and you move on. You make your choice. I would never vote for this, because it's not broken.
Recognizing that there are two, two different perspectives, I, I just want to share, being on the Legislative Response Team, and listening to the elected board members that are on that, the discussion was, there's recognition, and I believe, as you look at this, one of the two options. It, it validates the current process, and affirms that, you know, there's, there's some value, and that was kind of the discussion, that the commission, the committee that reviewed and is, is charged with bringing forward three viable candidates for our current situation, is for the Board of Commissioners to make a decision. There was, what I heard was, we need to put this on as something for consideration. But then the other discussion was, you know, we're elected from, by the public, to serve on the Board of Education. Doesn't it make sense for those remaining elected officials on the Board of Ed to make a decision for that replacement, and potentially even honoring that process that is in place with the, the vetting process, at least by the commission? That's, and hopefully, that will help both sides to kind of hear and process the, the rationale for, for this being one of the priorities for consideration.
I'm in favor of B. I'm just going to say, I'm in favor of B, to have the nominating commission submit names to us.
To the Board of Education.
To the Board of Education.
Well, I, I'd like to back up to something Dr. Zettmeyer said. Dr. Zettmeyer, you said something about three members of this board not fulfilling their, their term of office and creating a vacancy?
Anyway, let's face it, we're ancient, Melissa. Who knows if we're going to make it through the next four years?
Well, you made it sound like there was some alter-, and in fact, I think you mentioned that there was an ulterior motive for wanting to do this? And why would we want to fix...
I just know the people that are on the LRT does not include me. So this is like the first time I'm, I'm going, "What? This is a legislative priority?"
This is a priority that the Legislative Response Team has brought forward for discussion by the entire board. And that's what, that's what's happening now. What are you saying? You don't want to discuss it?
I said, "I'm discussing." That's what I was doing, discussing.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't want to be attacked for what I think. That's what I think.
Well, if anything, I feel attacked.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't intend that.
I've, I've been told that, you know, I, I'm arguing and not wanting to discuss. You know, I've, I've been told that, that, why should we entertain the idea of fixing something that's not broken? I've presented my thoughts. I've told you why I think it's a, for, to me, it's about local control. It's about the Board of Education handling the Board of Education's business, and not another board. That's all it's about, to me.
Yeah, I heard you say that the first time.
Okay. Well, that's, take my word for it. That's what it is. And as far as it being ill-timed, it's happening now. ill-timed, it's happening now, because in order for it to be part of a legislative program, it has to happen now.
I'll just say this. I served on the nominating commission once, when it was under the governor, whatever they called it that, in those days. And the governor, I can't remember who was the governor then, but he was a Democrat, and it was made clear to the committee that he wanted a certain candidate, who was a Democrat, on this board. And that's the person that got on. And there was a lot of controversy about that, because one day, an individual, very active in local Democratic politics, who knew me, and I was the WCTA representative on that committee, called a gentleman, wasn't concerned about the fact, and let's talk politics here for a minute, the fact that I was a registered Republican, and they weren't too comfortable with that, and so forth. So there's a lot of politics goes into it, and there's a lot of politics circulating, circulating around this election and so forth, and we all know it. Everybody sitting here knows it. So you can say what you want, but this is a nonpartisan board, fine, but I don't know that it's going to remain a nonpartisan board. I think it's pretty clear to this gentleman, and this is my opinion, and I'm entitled to it, that there's a lot of pressure out there to get certain people sitting here today off this board, and everybody knows it. So I've had my say for once.
I'd just like to make it perfectly clear that in no way, shape, or form do I think the vacancies were filled by anyone other than qualified-
They were.
-candidates.
They were.
Correct. I would also like to say that the Board of County Commissioners, should there be a vacancy on that board, and there has been, the Board of Education is not asked to select a replacement. They choose their own. Why would it be any different for this board than that board?
President Williams, it appears, before I make a comment, Mr. Bickford has been, he moved his mic closer, so I think he was trying to say something.
I've been waiting patiently. I just wanted to explain why I was in support of it, because the county commissioners get to choose their own replacement, the city council gets to choose their own replacement. So when it was brought up, I thought that makes sense, that we would get to choose our own replacement. I, too, was on the nominating committee that ended up choosing, when the commissioners chose Linda Murray. And I would agree, it was very well-run. We heard from members of the public. So I like the idea of the nominating committee. And I will say, I think there's sort of a de facto tradition, because we've done it twice now, that when I hear from county commissioners, they say they tend to vote for the person who got the most votes in the last election, which, you know, which it'd be great if they put that in writing, because I wouldn't mind that either, because I feel like if you've run for office and gotten votes, that makes sense that you might be on the board, but that's just where I am in the discussion.
Thank you, Peter. That's so wise. President Williams, if I may, as we just, before we move forward, one of the things I think I should have said at the outset of this, is we are voting, and maybe I did, but the Board of Ed needs to vote on this legislative program at the next business meeting. So I, hearing that there's conversation on both sides, while we can't take formal action, there probably should be some consensus of whether we move forward with this priority or not, because this is the only priority so far, any aspect of the program so far, where there's been a lot of debate and discussion. And I would hate to have the entire program potentially fail at the next meeting and not have anything to present to the delegation. So if I may offer, there maybe should be some discussion if we should even move forward with this priority or not, and if there's consensus.
This may surprise people, but actually, my reaction to this, when it first came up, I'm in support of doing it, but I'm pretty sure I said in the LRT meeting that, let's just wait till after the election, till we get the board situated and all that, bring it up if we want to, next legislative session. That was my opinion to start, but, you know.
That's wise, too, Stan.
But I know there's a lot of politics going on, trying to get control of this board-
So are you for it, or against it?
-by local politicians. And you all can deny it all you want, but I know that's true.
So do we have consensus to move this priority forward or not?
I'm a no. But I would consider, if you want to do something after the election, I would consider that.
So that would be for the 2026 legislative program? You would be in favor of having it-
Discussion and having-
-as part of the 2026 program?
I think it'd be more fair.
I'm not understanding.
I think if there's an election, I think people just need to kind of chill out and let things happen, and then let the board decide for the next time. Because gosh only knows. I mean, we've got four people on this board. You could get four new members. I don't think it's going to happen, but you could get four more members. And then what if their priorities are not the same? And then we don't have it. So I think those, you know, I just think it maybe stands right on that one. Let it go to another year.
Mark that down. Mike agreed with me. Wow.
Even Wayne, Wayne Ryden now agreed with you every once in a while, so.
He said the same thing then, too, didn't he?
He did. Yes, he did.
So we have to approve this as a package at the next?
So certainly, we could, if someone were to make a motion to amend, to strike, to move, to redact, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, not right on myself, there's a lot of different ways to do it. It's cleaner if we, if there's not, if there's not consensus, if there's consensus to not move forward, then we remove it now versus trying to do it on the fly during the meeting. But if there's consensus, move it forward, then we'd have to have a discussion about choice A or choice B. So not to say we couldn't have that discussion again and make changes during the board meeting, but if there is a direction we're leaning today, then, you know, I'm not saying you have to make any decisions today, because you can't take formal action. But if there's strong feelings and there's consensus, that makes sense.
And I will say this. I don't believe, and I said this in the LRT, I don't believe, given the makeup of the local delegation to the General Assembly, that they're going to go along with this, because it's, they're going to view it as, oh, it's going to take patronage power away from some of our buddies sitting on the county commission. I don't think they'll go for it for that reason. It shouldn't be the reason why they wouldn't go for it, but that's what I think will happen.
So do we have consensus? Or do we want to not consider this as part of the legislative priorities?
I would say we don't have consensus. So I'd say we'd not include it. But I think it was a good discussion. I agree with Stan. I think it'll be dead in the water with our delegation.
I'm sorry, Melissa. I didn't hear what you said.
I didn't say a word. I just asked if there was consensus.
You said, "Do we have consensus, too?"
Yes. I said, "Do we have consensus?" And we're discussing this topic, so, and we don't. So we will not be moving this forward to the business meeting.
So with that, my office will make the changes so far in the draft. So your draft will look different, well, we still have more in the packet to cover, but the draft will look different in your board packets for the next meeting, but you will receive that well in advance.
Okay, moving on to the watch list. And this is a group of topics of interest that we will be watching to see if there are any bills introduced on and so forth during the upcoming session.
So it's largely unchanged. There's one new item, and I'll go through that. The Blueprint for Maryland's Future, we've been watching that since its inception, just actively tracking bills, as have come before this board before, as well as Mr. Edwards, to just inform the board of bills that have come up. So we'll be watching anything with Blueprint. Breakfast and lunch programs, universal expansion. There was a bill introduced last year to fund breakfast and lunch programs. That bill did not pass in its original form. However, what was passed was essentially, and I'm going to paraphrase, a work group to put together what the cost would be, and to bring forward to the legislature what that entailed in the cost, because they thought it was too costly, and they didn't really have numbers. So it's a task force. It's going to be task force. It's going to be bringing forth information. So we'll be watching that to see what happens there. But again, with our previous language with unfunded mandates, we would oppose anything that's unfunded. Always for the past almost decade is the free and appropriate education burden of proof and fee shifting. Right now, as it has been, parents have the burden of proof, and that's in denial of FAP and a special ed matter. And we would, we're going to watch that to see if that bill is introduced. It's been introduced in the past, where the burden would shift to the local boards of ed, but that would put tremendous strain on resources in the district. So we'll continue to monitor that. Also contest any further increases in the transfer of pension costs. The normal pension costs are over eight and a half million dollars. Blueprint does require an increase in teacher salaries, which will further increase our pension costs as well. So we'll be monitoring any legislation that could potentially move some of that burden on the local, because we just simply can't afford it. And then, as we've talked about before, safe and secure learning environment, watching any bills that would require mandates, while we think it's very appropriate for security and mental health, and we're watching the Safe to Learn Act, we just want to make certain there's adequate equitable, and equitable funding to local schools to ensure that any bills that come in are also funded as well. Next, Mr. Edwards will go through the key dates for the upcoming session.
Okay, to help you understand the graphic here, everything above the blue line are kind of actions that the board will take and updates that we have, and then everything beneath that blue line there are activities that will take place in Annapolis with the General Assembly. So as we mentioned at the top, at your next meeting, November 19th, we will be looking for the board to adopt its legislative program. And then you can see, from that point forward, we've got monthly updates for you, once the legislature goes into session, and that session begins on January the 8th. Note again, the November 20th date for the meeting with the delegation to review the legislative program that the board adopts. One date that's not on here, that we just learned earlier this morning, that I did want to make note of, is January 22nd, is Washington County Day in Annapolis. So if you want to make note of that, January 22nd, Washington County Day. And then the other date that I want to draw your attention to is the May Legislative Day, which I believe you all have been made aware of previously, is February 3rd. And the session is expected to wrap up on April 7th, and then we'll have our final planned update for the board on April the 15th. Nothing better on Tax Day than a legislative update.
Glad I made somebody laugh. Any questions?
I had a question. Early on, maintenance of effort was on there about adequate and equitable local and state funding. Just for the record, maintenance of effort doesn't mean what it used to mean, correct?
Correct. I mean, we're, here, we're talking about any effort to reduce the level of school funding should be opposed. We'll be in the, like, we will likely be in the blueprint formula this year, not that escalator clause.
Right, right. Why are we using, still using the same term?
I would have to turn that question over to Mr. Prue.
It's a little confusing. I know about the escalator clause, but we're still using the same term.
So I think, I think what I would say is, my answer probably differs a little bit from Ms. Ram. Maintenance of effort is, still exists in a form. What you need to consider is, when you think forward, you know, we've considered maintenance of effort as, again, the appropriation by the county government to the Board of Education on a per pupil basis, not the aggregate, but the per pupil. So it can ebb and flow up and down based on what happens with your enrollment. It still exists, even though you have the blueprint. And what you need to consider, and what will likely happen potentially in some smaller districts, especially those with declining enrollments, is that you get into the blueprint formula, and as you have an enrollment drop, and the per capita allocations are going up, you may actually see a decrease in your blueprint formula, but your per pupil allocation is still there under maintenance of effort. So those two are going to still maintain itself, and it is possible, in, I've not modeled this, but I'm, it's, I think through it, I believe it's possible that you could ebb in and out of blueprint and maintenance of effort if you are, if your enrollment sort of teeter tots, essentially, that it might go up a little bit, it might come down a little bit, and you might bounce in and out of the maintenance of effort and blueprint formulas. So it still exists in the law, in the same form. But you, but the county government is required to pay the greater amount, blueprint formula or maintenance of effort, whichever it is, that's the amount the county government has provided to allocate.
And under the blueprint, it's probably higher than maintenance of effort?
I would think over time. But, but again, ma-, again, maintenance of effort is adjusted annually, so that if your appropriation last year, you know, like for us, our appropriation for FY '25 went up, that means maintenance of effort per pupil went up. And if you get into the blueprint, you know, let's say we do get into the blueprint next year, and the forecasts we shared during last year's budget process are accurate. So let's say there's a three and a half, four million dollar lift on the part of county government next year. Well, that also means, for '27, maintenance of effort comes up to what is the value you appropriated in FY '26 on a per pupil level. So the two kind of move at the same rate.
And one additional point of clarification, under the accurate, adequate and equitable local state and funding, what we want to oppose is that any changes that would say they no longer have to provide maintenance of effort. We don't want the amount of money we receive to go down.
That's what I, that's what I heard it as, is making sure that there's still that safety net of funding remains the same values as previous year, and you're never going to see a massive cut in funding.
And I would think-
Based on pupil levels, I know.
I think two things. One, I believe, the legislature wrote out, when they wrote the blueprint law, they eliminated the effort escalator, you know, what was always dubbed as the low effort clause, right? They wrote that out of the law. I think, in a way, to put a little bit of a cap on the current maintenance of effort, to allow blueprint to catch up. But if you happen to fall, if you do have declining enrollment, and you happen to fall into maintenance of effort, the risk for school districts is, maintenance of effort is static. Maintenance of effort is, whatever your amount is today, if you're, when you have declining enrollment, and you're in maintenance of effort formula, and it's the, it's the greater of your, of your two funding models, we always, we used to always talk about this, if the county gave us $5,000 today, they can give us $5,000 for the next 20 years as per pupil, on a per pupil level. The total allocation ebbs and flows, but on a per pupil level, once they set the bar at $5,000, as long as they don't increase per pupil, $5,000 is the law for perpetuity. You cannot operate the school system on that level of funding. There's got to be an inflationary factor if you're in the maintenance of effort formula. So I believe that's a drawdown to, or a drawback to, the blueprint legislation. But I do believe they wrote it out, because they did want to put a bit of a ceiling on maintenance of effort, because I don't think they envisioned that maintenance of effort would be the funding mode moving forward, that the blueprint would exceed maintenance of effort. But I'm not sure anyone expected that, or thought through enough to think that every year, maintenance of effort goes up, because your per pupil allocation under the blueprint also goes up. Clear as mud? Clear as mud?
So, we have two more things to decide. I guess it's a given that Mr. Edwards is our in-house legislative representative, board to Annapolis, correct?
Well, nothing is ever given, not them saying he shouldn't. I'm just, that is something the board will have to take action on at the next board meeting, to determine who is part of the LRT.
So, going, going forward, we would have-
The board po-, I interrupt, I apologize. The board policy sets out the positions, not the individuals, so then we name the individuals at the next board meeting.
At the next board meeting.
Correct.
So, it would be good to know that going ahead in order to prepare the materials.
I think Ms. Brown would appreciate that.
Likewise, with regard to the LRT team, the policy speaks to the members of the LRT, being the president of the board, and up to two other members. So, is it the board's desire to leave that until the 19th to decide who those two, just let the nominations come from the floor?
I think that makes the most sense.
It's fine. Peter's fine.
Mrs. Murray, Dr. Zettmeyer, are we okay with doing that, Mr. Stafford? So, if there are no further questions, then we know what we're bringing forward for the 19th. Anything else we need to discuss? Thank you both, and we will bring this process to a close. Thank you all.